All right. We ready to get started?
I'm ready.
Right. In that case, let's go for it. So first order of business is a change in the order of business. So number one, I wanted to propose the option of bringing the citizen comments section just after the city manager's report to give, let's say a citizen just wanted to report a pothole in front of their house that they wanted the city to take care of. And they didn't have any interest in any of our resolutions or ordinances for that day. I thought it'd be a good option to give them the opportunity to say their item not on the agenda and then they could go ahead and head out. And rather than having to sit through the full length of the meeting if it didn't apply to them. And then we could, you know, resolve that and move forward. And as soon as we were completed with our agenda items, we would then adjourn. So I wanted to run that by you guys and see what you thought.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Any thoughts Pete?
Uh, yeah. One of those, I want to make sure that we get to the city business first because I don't want, I don't want the, the meeting to get hijacked at the beginning of the meeting for citizens comments. I, 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 I'm not, I'm not a big favor of that. I'd, I'd rather have the citizens comments at the, at the, at the end of the, or meetings, let us get our business taken care of and done. If they've got a pothole, they need to call the city manager anyway. So, um, you know, if it's something that's not on the agenda, in other words, they could come in and start talking about a lot of things that we're about to talk about or about to vote on that at the city meeting portion of this, that is, that's my opinion. I think we need to keep the citizens comments at the end of the comments section.
Okay, I agree. I agree with Pete because when we get off, people will get off and like a dog and pony show. And if, if it is just a problem like a pothole or the garbage is not picked up or, or whatever, that's what we have people at City Hall on the day to the grace. So I, I'd prefer not to do that. I'd prefer to leave it like it is.
Okay. Well, perhaps the pothole is a bad example because it would be appropriate chain of command would be to just email City Hall about it. But I'm just thinking about for whatever the citizens concern is that for an item not on the agenda. But that's a good, a good thought that it could, you know, conceivably derail city business. For clarity, Tim, if we were to take care of city business first, I mean, the way, the way things are now, where city business comes first and then citizen comments are last, the last thing before we adjourn. If citizen comments run long, you know, we have a three minute limit per person, but say there's a lot of people that come up to speak and the meeting is running long beyond the 7:00 PM time, do we have, do we continue hearing public comments or is there a time limit cutoff?
No, there's, there's no time limit on, on a commission meeting. You know, we'll, we'll do our business how long it takes and we'll answer citizens comments until we don't have anymore.
Okay. So if we had citizen comments, even say we had a divisive issue like the plasma center where we had a lot of people coming to speak, it wouldn't affect the overall length of the meeting whether the citizen comments were earlier or later?
No.
Okay.
No, no, it's, it's, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do our business and allow the citizens to comment however long it takes.
Okay.
I think we, I think I've been in meetings as long as 10 o'clock. So we, we stay until business is done.
Sure. Vice Mayor Dalton, you're the only one I haven't heard from on the matter.
Well, I, I, I would say that in light of that, I, I'm fine with leaving it where it is now. I, I think that, I think it makes sense to kind of go through everything else and then, uh, like Pete said, I mean, I do worry about people kind of disrupting kind of the flow of the conversation about things. Um, and, and it's, if there is no time cutoff, I don't, I don't see an issue with keeping it at that time.
Okay.
Or at that place.
Thank you all for your input. I thought it was worth exploring, putting it out there, but I'm fine with leaving it just the way it is if that, if it pleases the court. Now, let's see, we, next we have the order of business. Another thing that came up was just, you know, we, and I saw Commissioner Phillips emailed Tim about this.
I can barely hear you Holly. I'm looking for my, I'm looking for my volume control as we're speaking.
See if you can turn up your volume because I am, I'm sitting right in front of my microphone here. Um, so Commissioner Phillips, I saw emailed, um, Tim about, you know, last meeting was, we had a little bit of growing pains with the Zoom. So this time we're going to have people put their name and address in the comments if they want to make a comment. Tim, did you get my email? Can we have Tracy read off the comments during the citizen comment period at the end?
Well, the way it's kind of set up, she'll be the moderator. She will be answering those chats. And then when we get to the citizens comments sections, one of, one at a time, those people will be able to come on and ask their question.
Okay. Will they still be able to ask a question through the chat? If they put their name and address and can?
Well, yes, that, that was one of the thing. I think you might've, you might've logged in. We had some instructions up before the work session agenda popped up. That's, there they go. That pretty much explains to those what, what we'll do.
I also wanted to ask, it, it might be a little late notice, but worst case scenario, if we could do it in the next, the first meeting in February, I, I, it was a little funny with the pledge of allegiance, not having any flag in any of the Zoom screens to look at. If we, one up on the screen for the pledge, that would be helpful, I think.
Sure. No problem.
Awesome. All right. And then, um, next we have the invocation. I would love to hear all of your thoughts on, on that.
I think everybody knows my thoughts, so I'm not gonna say, yeah, just listen.
Commissioner LaCombe, you were not present for the last meeting. Do you, do you have any opinion about the invocation order of business?
Think that the invocation would be nice if we could bring in our area pastor or representatives from the churches in Red Bank and have sort of a call of order to get them all an opportunity to have an invocation for us. And I don't know the best way to do that as far as giving each commissioner a time to pick one or how that needs to be done. But I would recommend at least giving us that option.
Sure. Do we have Arnie present?
Um, Arnie's gonna be a little late, but he, he will be on soon.
Okay.
I think what I read is that we have to make a list of the pastors. I don't think we can invite them that they can volunteer to do that. If I'm not mistaken, is that the way it is?
Yes. It was number three in Arnie's and mine letter that we sent to you guys. And I think it's in your agenda packet. The thermos locking mechanism for addressing the issue involves a content neutral, identity neutral opportunity for leaders of religious institutions, churches to come forward and give those prayers.
Um, I have, I have a pretty lengthy, sorry, I have a pretty lengthy doc, uh, write-up that I prepared. If, uh, if Ed, if you are, Commissioner LaCombe, if you're finished with your thoughts.
Something there other than a moment of silence.
Okay. Um, thank you. So I have this typed up, so I'm going to be reading from the, what I typed up. Um, I've spent, after we, you know, had discussion about it, I've spent the past few weeks giving a lot of thought and consideration to the purpose and practice of an invocation. I'm at the start of governmental meetings. While the intention of an invocation can be varied and nuanced, its practice is much clearer. Over the past 245 years since our, you know, we were established as a country, this practice has evolved greatly and continues to be modified and amended. Um, I did find, I did research and found that, you know, a particular note that invocations given by elected officials have recently been contested and upheld in courts of appeals based on the establishment clause, which separates church and state. In addition, non secular invocations have been found by courts to be discriminatory in nature based on the First Amendment. Although because the First Amendment guarantees freedoms concerning religion, forbids promoting one religion over others, and forbids the restriction of an individual's religious freedom, best practices for our city would dictate that striving, that going forward, we should strive toward an invocation procedure that's inclusive of all people regardless of their religion or religious practice. Um, and then I just, I like a little bit of background that's kind of guiding me and decisions that I make. I'm a licensed master social worker. I've worked professionally in that capacity for nearly seven years. I complete a minimum of 12 hours of continuing education training every year and receive instruction on topics including community organization and engagement, ethics, diversity and cultural competence. Um, I'm committed to upholding social worker code of ethics, not only because it's my professional duty, but because more importantly, I hold these values at the forefront of every decision I make in my own life. Based on these values, you know, I, I commit myself to elevating service to others over self-interest, to pursuing social change. Excuse me, I'm sorry, my son is interrupting me. Treating each person in a caring and respectful fashion while being mindful of individual differences and cultural and ethnic diversity, and seeking to strengthen relationships among a diverse array of individuals and contexts. Further, since it's my ethical responsibility not to practice, condone, facilitate, or collaborate with any form of discrimination on the basis of race, ethnicity, national origin, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, age, marital status, political belief, religion, immigration status, or mental or physical ability, I'm committed to promoting policies and practices that demonstrate respect for the diversity of our wonderful citizens. Mayor Barry and I were fortunate to have the opportunity to see firsthand the diverse population that makes up Red Bank citizens. From September to November of 2020, Mayor Barry and I walked through our neighborhoods, unlocked on approximately 2,000 of our neighbors' doors. We talked with hundreds of citizens face to face and shared phone calls and written conversations with many more. Um, while Red Bank is somewhat homogeneous in terms of race and color, that's where our homogeneity ends. Our neighbors are beautifully diverse, especially when it comes to age, sexual orientation, marital status, national origin, political belief and religion. As someone who was elected to represent all Red Bank citizens, old and new, I cannot ethically support the continuation of an invocation that excludes so many of our wonderful citizens who live here and who have chosen to make Red Bank their home. In order to be inclusive of all of our citizens, I, I offer the following options. One being the elimination of the invocation in its entirety. Two, a moment of silence with or without language that promotes self-reflection in whichever way the citizen feels comfortable. Or three, like you guys were just discussing, content and identity neutral invocations by registered ministers or representatives of any faith in Hamilton County. With regard to that last option, I feel obligated to point out that Red Bank has approximately 20 church institutions and that they each follow a Christ-based faith. Therefore, if we were to limit prayer privileges only to registered ministers or representatives of faith organizations within the Red Bank city limits, that would be tantamount to discriminating against any person of faith, minister or representative who isn't a Protestant Christian. Based on my background, my experience, my recent firsthand conversations with Red Bank citizens and comments that I have received from both inside and outside the faith community in support of inclusivity, these are the only options I feel that directly promote acceptance, tolerance, appreciation and respect of every single one of our neighbors. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Dalton, Commissioner Phillips, do you have any opinion on this matter?
Yes, I, yes, I do. Um, you know, well, I hold my personal preferences and my religious beliefs very, very private. And, um, where I have been in invocations, where I have felt uncomfortable about them, it was still one of those things that I think there's a lot of other orders of business of this city that need to be dealt with other than whether we pray at the beginning of the meeting or not. Now, I'm just kind of a, I would rather that, like, I'd like to have that if the churches want to pray at our, at our events, or they want to lead off our meetings, then they need to show up and lead off our meetings. And I think that all of the churches in our area would like to have that. And, um, and I like what Arnie said, that they were an IRS, uh, entity. So they had to be recognized by the IRS. So it's not, uh, the chicken church or whatever they want to call it, that they come in and do an invocation at our time. So that being said, we've got to have that, I would say the churches that are in our community should be more than welcome to come in and do our invocations. And, um, and, and I think we need to kind of put this to bed and move along. I just don't think there's that, I, I mean, I, I mean, just because we don't have to be totally inclusive of everyone. There's going to be difference of opinions of every stature, state, religious beliefs. I know people in the same church that don't get along religious beliefs. So, so it's a, I think that's something that, and, and if not, if there's no one from there, I do think that that is not in the government's, it, it shouldn't be Tim's job to give the invocation, or we shouldn't call out the chief of police to give the invocation. I think that that needs to be done by the clergy of our churches that we have residing in Red Bank. My opinion.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Phillips. Since everyone has spoken, I will give my opinion on the matter. I've prepared a statement as well. Personally, I myself believe in God, identify as a Christian. I was raised in the church. In fact, I met my husband in church. And personally, prayer is part of my own private spiritual practice. But my, I, I also read the Bible and in Matthew 6:6, it says not to play, pray on the street corners and in public view, but rather when you pray, go into your room, close the door and pray to your father who is unseen. So this is a part of my, my personal private practice at home. So while I recognize that I share this same religious background and experience in common with many citizens of Red Bank, I also recognize that by no means do I share that background with all the citizens of Red Bank. In fact, I heard from a, somebody in the faith community recently that only approximately one third of our residents attend church. So even from that standpoint, you know, we're may, maybe not necessarily representing the majority of our population, might actually be excluding the majority of our population. As mayor, one of my goals is to make our city welcoming and inclusive to all my wonderful neighbors regardless of race, ethnicity, religious background by upholding the all-American principle of separation of church and state. So if silent prayer or moment of silence or time of silence is not a new concept, for over 300 years, Quakers have been practicing silent prayer in America within the Christian tradition, including moments of silence during group activities. Since silence contains no statements or assumptions concerning beliefs, it's more easily accepted and used than a spoken prayer observance when persons of different religious backgrounds and cultural backgrounds have to participate together. This effectiveness of Quaker style silence to invoke, invoke reflection, respect in any setting has led to its almost universal use in the English speaking world as well as other diverse societies like ours. This is also the case within many institutions, especially where groups with many different backgrounds and belief must collaborate such as schools, companies, the military and governments. Our city attorney has laid out three potential options for us. One of those options, as you all know, is to scrap the invocation altogether. I actually would much prefer a moment of silence to eliminating the invocation entirely because I think it is valuable to have that time as a time to pause and reflect and gather one's thoughts and take a deep breath. And, and in some of our cases, you know, pray to God or, or, you know, whatever, meditate, whatever our own religious practices in preparation for this important time. He also laid out the option of an open application for ministers of, like Pete mentioned, IRS registered faith organizations within the city limits. So while I, I'm not entirely opposed to that option and having a minister lead the prayer, I do share Vice Mayor Dalton's concerns that just because we don't have a brick and mortar institution, religious institution in our city limits, doesn't mean that we don't have citizens practicing that religious faith. And, and the number one example that comes to my mind is St. Jude Catholic Church is actually not in the Red Bank city limits. It's outside of the Red Bank city limits on Ashland Terrace. And we have a huge number of population that, that attend the Catholic church. But if we follow that guideline, we would be, they wouldn't be eligible because they're not in the city limits. And so we would be excluding our entire Catholic population, for example. So that doesn't seem like the best way forward. If we do go forward with the registry, I think it would be better to do it and in more similar to the style of Hamilton County. Or even we could just draft right off of the Hamilton County existing database so that we do include all of our neighbors, including those that go to St. Jude's, including any, if we have any practicing Jewish people, you know, we don't have any Jewish temples in the city limits. We have several throughout Hamilton County, but none in Red Bank. That doesn't mean we don't have a Jewish population here practicing. In fact, we have a huge, beautiful Jewish cemetery on Low Water. So I'm, I'm concerned about that option. So of course, I'm, I'm sure all of you can guess that my, my top option that I would prefer is to continue practicing a moment of silence. I have had ongoing conversations with citizens in the faith community in Red Bank. I just had a meeting today with some members of the Chattanooga House of Prayer and they had some, they also suggested that the moment of silence was the preferred option for many in the faith community. And I'm going to, at today's meeting, since we're not to vote yet, I'm going to implement a slightly updated strategy for the moment of silence based on the feedback that I got from the faith community to make it a little bit longer. And I'm going to introduce that so that everybody knows that the audio on their Zoom call didn't stop working. So for all these reasons I've described, I, I urge my, an appeal to my fellow board members to consider a moment of silence going forward as the most inclusive way to reflect on our solemn duty as commissioners and to ensure a welcoming environment for all of our citizens and neighbors in our growing community, both new and old. Thank you. Right?
I got, I got something else to decide, to say here. The, the, you know, on, on an agenda, that there is, is there for a reason that we, we do something because it's on the agenda. I don't think that it is right to unilaterally change our agenda without discussing it with the other board members, being it that if you lead the meeting or not, it still needs to be through the other commissioners, need to have just as much input as the mayor or the vice mayor does on this. When you start changing the agenda in the middle of the stream because of it, then that is not according to the rules of, what is, what's the, the name of the little book of the rules?
Robert Rule of Order.
There you go. So, and, and that being said, is, is really one of the more sticky points for me than the invocation is that if we're changing the agenda without it being noted so publicly.
Well, we're still observing the invocation, just there's, and there's no formal language in our ordinances describing what, how the invocation should be observed. So.
Irregardless though, I cannot come up here and change the agenda.
That's absolutely correct. Yes, we cannot change the items on the agenda or the order of the agenda without a vote.
Right. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Anything else before we move on to the next item?
I think that the discussion that we had, I think, I may have betrayed everybody, but I think that Ed and Pete are okay with having pastors in the area. And it doesn't happen, like you say, that does exclude St. Jude's and Catholic churches. I, I'm okay with it being Red Bank area, not, not just the city of Red Bank. Let's try that and see how it works out before we scrap prayer altogether because I have heard from so many citizens of Red Bank that they're just not happy about that. And I, I just don't think it's a good thing to do that. So I would like to try having an invocation with area pastors and we'll make a list of the different churches and include those outside of Red Bank in the Red Bank area. And let's, I'm, I'm for trying that for a little while. I, I'm just not comfortable with, with not having some sort of prayer. So what do you guys think?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Geno. I am, I'm wondering from a legal standpoint, how we would define Red Bank area. It'd be hard to determine, like, you know, if it's not the Red Bank city limits, what's the cutoff point? And again, if we were to maybe adopt the Hamilton County, I believe they already have a registry of all the Hamilton County organizations. That would be one option that would certainly encompass, you know, the, the greater area for sure. Tim, do you have any suggestions for how Red Bank area would be defined legally? Or do, should we just refer that to Arnie?
Yes, I, I mean, I'm thinking that we were probably put a lot of thought into what Hamilton County's registry is. And so I've heard all of these comments and we can try to put something together and get it back on an agenda for you guys to look at.
Okay. I will say I have also heard from the occasional citizen who is displeased with the change to a moment of silence, but that's maybe three citizens total. And I've heard from closer to a dozen that they support the moment of silence. So just from a public support standpoint, I can't say that I've demonstrated the same outcome as Commissioner Geno. But we, I'm sure we have different, different citizens emailing different ones of us.
I'm sure.
All right. Any other comments before we move on to the next item?
I'm good.
So the next item is stormwater fees. I actually asked Tim to put this on the agenda. So Tim actually just informed me, it came, brought it to my attention recently, that our stormwater fees are currently barely sufficient to cover emergency product, projects and minimum maintenance, much less many desperately needed improvement and mitigation projects. I know you all already know, but, but for the sake of, you know, any citizens that we might have on this call who may not already be familiar with the way stormwater fees work, it's an enterprise fund. And so it's very much like our solid waste fees, or although we don't, we're not the ones managing these services like your electric bill, your water bill, sewer bill. This fees go to maintain infrastructure for what your property itself is generating. So it's supposed to be based on the impermeable surface on your own property. So each property pays based on the impermeable surface creating stormwater runoff that runs into common spaces. So without mitigation and infrastructure improvements, it can contribute to flooding on other people's property. So it's kind of a tragedy of the commons issue and utility issue. So this is why I think it would be prudent for our city to enlist the help of an MTA stormwater consultant to assess, just to assess our current stormwater fee structure. Specifically, I want to make sure that the stormwater being generated by all impermeable surfaces throughout the city are, you know, being covered by this fee structure to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place. This is especially important because all, my understanding is that the entirety of Dayton Boulevard is in the flood zone. So if we don't have good stormwater practices and good floodwater management and good infrastructure that's keeping up with added, all the development that we're getting and all the new impermeable surfaces that are being added to our city, it could actually shut down our economy if Dayton Boulevard were to flood. And with weather events being more unpredictable every single year and being more extreme, this is something I really think we need to plan ahead for infrastructure wise. So I just wanted to bring that up with you guys and hear your thoughts.
What, do you know what the evaluation would entail from the MTA stormwater people?
That's a great question. It sounds like. That's a great question. It sounds like, talking to our consultant, Hannah, there's two different options. They can do just basically a fee consultation and just take a look at our fee structure and make general recommendations. And that would be at no cost. That would already be included with the services that, you know, taxes are paying for. If we wanted to dig into it deeper, they do have a more intensive stormwater fee analysis that will dig into, you know, where our water fees are now, what our expenses are, what our upcoming projects are, what we would really need to fund all of that, that fund everything we need to prevent flooding in our city. That would have a minimal cost to it. And I'm still waiting to hear back from Intas ballpark for what that would cost. But Hannah said it would be, you know, if we wanted to do something more detailed.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I think it would be worth checking into, especially since we have, you know, a new development. I'm not sure, Tim, if we have a timeline on that, but the green tech development that's going to be coming, you know, in North, North Dayton Boulevard, I think they maybe said the spring or something, they were going to start working on that, breaking ground on that. So, you know, and continued development throughout the city. I think that's something we need to, like, be proactive about.
Yes.
Does anybody have any objections to Tim going forward with that, looking into those fee structures?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have no objections.
And what are your thoughts?
I believe that we need to look into it. Our stormwater fund just barely squeaks by, and we're very limited to what we can do under that fund. So I can't see how it would hurt for us to reach out with some professional help to see where we're at.
We know that our stormwater fee's not been covering our stormwater problems, so I'm in agreement with that.
Commissioner Phillips, any thoughts?
Well, you know, I've had my business on the Boulevard for 15 years. I've seen a bunch of tow chokers. I've seen the manhole cover shoot up about four foot in a couple rainstorm. Never seen it flood. I'm in the flood zone myself. I have to pay the flood insurance. And, you know, and I'm kind of wondering, when's the last time that was looked at, was the flood plain? But that's a different story for another day. As far as stormwater fees, are you saying that you want to, what, measure the people's impervious surfaces and make sure that they're paying their fair share? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, because, like I said, stormwater's an enterprise fund, so every property owner should be paying based on the stormwater they're generating, because they're paying for the infrastructure it takes to carry that stormwater away without flooding somebody else's property down the hill. So, you know, it's only fair that every.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, I've got a fountain in my yard every time it rains, too. It shoots up about two foot, so.
Be able to address that if we had.
Well, yeah, well, no, it's one of those things, every time I've called, that's on private property, and then you gotta gotta deal with that, you know. But, so, you know, yeah, I guess it needs to be looked at. With what in, what is the end in mind?
Hopefully, and tell me if I'm wrong, Tim, to get our fee structure made in such a way that we can cover all of our expenses and prevent flooding going forward.
Okay.
That may involve, you know.
Well, and I'm just, who pays, does every single property owner pay stormwater fees?
That would be the idea. But we could, like I said, we have an MTS stormwater expert consultant at our disposal, so there's no reason not to do that and just see what their recommendations are. They'd certainly be more knowledgeable than I am about how to change, how to make adjustments to accommodate that.
So is it based on percentage of impervious surface right now?
For commercial, yes. For residential, no. Is that right, Tim?
So what is residential based on?
Just a flat fee, forty dollars. And we have to pay the county nine of that. So Red Bank receives thirty-one dollars of that fee.
Is that per year?
Yes.
Okay. That doesn't seem right, but I don't know.
Infrastructure improvements that we need.
Okay.
We can see what the consultant says and go from there after we get our consultation. Okay. Any other thoughts before we move on? I know we're, we gotta catch it up. All right. So next we have the purchase of three one one three Dayton Boulevard, the car wash between City Hall and the police department. Now, Tim, I had some questions about that. You said when we met last that the, it's on the agenda to vote today. And it's a resolution, so it's just one vote. There's only first reading, there's no second reading. And you said last we spoke that it's contingent upon the environmental study, but then I just got your email this morning that the environmental study is ready.
Yes.
But it's a hundred and forty-one pages.
Yeah, yeah. I sent you kind of the executive summary of the Phase One environmental. I do have, I couldn't send out the entire document, but the executive summary sums up what their findings were.
Okay. Can you share those with us briefly?
Yeah. They're saying currently within the scope of work and limitations defined herein, this assessment, this assessment has revealed no evidence of potential recognized environmental conditions. Hysterical recognized environmental conditions either, or controlled recognized environmental conditions associated with the subject property, except for the following. And the following is, the property does contain an oil water separator that is connected to the city sewer system. It goes on to say, where WWTA's been involved and the car wash has been cleaning that out. And if purchased, Marin Environmental recommends a user perform routine inspections and maintenance on the device to ensure that it continues to operate as designed. But we all know we're going to remove that oil water separator as part of the demolition. So based on the findings provided in this report, MEI recommends that no additional environmental assessment at this time.
Okay.
You know, I would like to say, you know, they, if you look at the whole report and the executive summary does mention that they went around to adjacent properties and checked those. I faced two is a whole lot more detail where they might come out and bore down in the ground and all that stuff, but they're thinking that we do not need to do so.
Nothing.
And Arnie has looked at the report, and Arnie, you're more welcome to add to what I've said.
If I can relieve some of the mayor's concern, the multiplicity of pages was the background documents, a bunch of photos and maps and old historical document. In their conclusions, they said the only commercial use that's ever been able to be documented on that property is the car wash itself, that the use historically from the early part of the twentieth century up until the, around the year 2000 or so, because the car wash was built in 2001, I think they had indicated. It had always been residential, and indeed we see an old residential garage on the back corner back there. So they weren't concerned about, you know, deposited or hidden pollutants. They looked at the brickyard across the street and found that the brickyard had had some difficulties years and years ago, but had gotten successful cleanup and sort of a smiley face from the Department of Environment and Conservation in the late 1990s. The service station that's several lots downstream from them seems to, from the place, seems to be out of the flow. And so there's none of the conditions that exist there that recommend any further or more intensive treatment or intensive investigation, such as Tim mentioned, boring holes and testing water with it bordering on Dayton Boulevard and on Stringer's Branch. And knowing what the history is, it's just nothing there that causes any significant concern. And as Tim said, that water separator, and does everybody understand that's really just a septic tank with settlement baffles in it, where the drain water passes through and lets the solids, dirt and straws and whatever else that goes through the floor drains at the car wash, settle down into that tank, and then the water flow on out into the sewer system. And so it's not a, not a, really a significant thing. Just you gotta keep it pumped out every now and then to keep the dirt and the sludge out of the sewer system. Plus, it's leaving, it's leaving there. So it was a good clean report. I've seen lots of them during my time. And it was a good clean report, particularly for something that fronts on Dayton Boulevard.
Okay. So you, Tim and Arnie, you both say you'd recommend to go ahead and not to be concerned about the environmental report result?
Yeah. I would say I'm comfortable with what they showed and what they said about it and the historic, the history of it, since it hadn't had any industrial uses or car shops or paint shops or anything like that. Comfortable in recommending it to you is a good word.
Well, thank you very much. I was concerned because I remember the language before that it was contingent on the environmental report being completed. So I was a little worried that we're going to vote on it after the environmental report came out, but before we really had a chance to dig into it. But it sounds like, have you guys had it for a little while already to look at it?
We were off yesterday when it came in, so I got it when I first got here this morning.
Okay.
Me, I got it about seven o'clock this morning.
Okay.
That means Tim was at the office before I was.
Get emails from Tim at like five thirty in the morning sometimes. All right. Any other, does anybody else have any thoughts or concerns about the three one one three Dayton?
Well, I think that's one of those, if there's a piece of purchase, there's a piece of property that the city needs to purchase, notice will be that one right there. That'd be my only thing. That's my thoughts on that. And it was good to see that it came back with a good clean bill, but I remember when they built that car wash, so, you know. So it was kind of like, I knew it was going to be pretty clean.
So, Tim, I do just have a question. So that with the resolution on there to approve an agreement for the purchase, that's just for you guys to, like, formalize the agreement and then you still will have to come back and we'll have to vote on it again?
No.
No.
This is it?
That's correct.
Last go before we purchase the property.
Okay.
Is that right?
That's right. The vote tonight, if approved, allows me to purchase the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? All right. So the next item is recycling program. I will keep this brief. Tim, could you give the rest of the board a breakdown of the cost to citizens for a curbside recycling service?
Yes. Right now, we don't offer a curbside. I looked into the numbers of what it would cost if we got back into the curbside recycling business. And based, what I found was, it would be about three dollars a month per residence for us to be able to run that business. So that would, that will be thirty-six dollars a year, additional to the current fee of one ninety-two that we charge for our garbage service now, moving that to two twenty-eight per year. But that would allow us to do curbside recycling.
Is that, is that still having our trash picked up one time a week kind of thing? And then, and then residential pick up one time per week?
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't change, it doesn't change anything on the solid waste side. We're just adding a recycle division to the solid waste. And, you know, just basically covering the cost of what it would take to operate that business for the recycling.
Yeah.
Would that just be, would they do pick up once a month or twice a month or every week?
Yes. I have put together a Red Bank recycle survey that we would get out to the citizens. And Holly mentioned about Google Sheets where they could go on there and respond, and we could kind of see what kind of response we'd get out of it. How many people are willing to recycle in the city, so we know a little bit more about it. Of course, this would definitely be a budget item that if we decided to do it, that's when we would decide, you know, during our budget workshops. But just wanted to bring it up for you guys to be thinking about. Between now and then, we'll be trying to get some surveys out to see what kind of interest we have in the program.
And then do, is there an idea of what would happen with the recycling center that's here right now?
Well, if, the recycle center that here is now is not Red Bank, it's Hamilton County.
Right.
We had recycled one time before, and the commission at the time felt like that there wasn't enough people recycling to cover it.
That was many years ago, right? Like twenty years ago? Okay.
Yeah, probably not quite that long, but it's been some time ago.
Okay.
I do recognize that the demographics of Red Bank has changed, and so that might change. We may have more people now that, that want to be involved in recycling. And that's the purpose of this survey, to try to see where we're at.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, and I just does a quick math. I think it's a hundred and forty-nine dollars a year is what scenic city charges me, and that's twelve dollars a month, so.
Yeah, I'm paying similar as a scenic city customer myself, so it would be significant savings to a great number of people already paying for residential curbside recycling.
And now, Tim, that's us, that's us as a city running the program, correct?
That is correct. We would, we would have to buy truck, which we can do that out of our solid waste, if we make it a part of our solid waste department. And we can, we can get a truck and run the program for that, yes.
Then we'll decide to sign this over the budgetary, when we start discussing the budget, correct?
That's right. If you all agree, then I'll get into the thick of it and gather all the information I can, and we will discuss it during the budget workshops.
Okay.
Thank you.
How many employees will we have to hire for that?
One.
Okay. Driver, and is it going to be an arm truck, just like our current solid waste trucks?
That is correct. I mean, currently, we have an automated truck and we have a semi. We have to have both because of our hills and the way Red Bank's laid out. But this, this one will be able to, because it's recycled, we'll be able to cover it with an automated truck with the arm.
Okay. There's one, just a driver, that's all we need. Well, obviously, I'm all about it. I have to say that during my campaign, going door to door, of all the ideas that I heard from my neighbors and suggested, definitely people were most excited about the potential for curbside recycling. But I hope, I expect that the survey will reflect that, that we've acquired a bit of public support for this. And even developers have approached me and said, you know, it would really add to property values in Red Bank is services like side recycling. So there's an economic impact as well. It's also been pointed out to me that it could reduce our cost for other solid waste, because if people are using their recycling bins, there will be less solid waste generated to pay, that we have to pay to dump at a landfill. So it could actually benefit us in savings in other departments as well. All right. Well, I want to go ahead and move forward because I know we're running short on time. We only got ten minutes left. Any other comments on recycling before we move forward?
No.
No. Okay. Then the last, it looks like the last thing on our work session agenda is the Tom Weather's Day of Remembrance. Any thoughts or comments on that?
I'm for it.
All right. One of our resolutions coming up, so that'll be a vote. All right. Any other business items not on the agenda? Okay. Well, if that is the case, then we can adjourn and we get a few minutes break before our meeting at six starts. Sound good, everybody?
Sounds good.
All right. See you guys soon.